All right. I'd like to call the May 19, 2021 meeting to order again. We met at 5:45 and went immediately into non-public session. So I'm going to read the preamble now. Good evening and welcome to the May 19, 2021 meeting of the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen. Due to the COVID-19 coronavirus crisis and in accordance with Governor Sununu's Emergency Order 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this board is authorized to meet electronically. However, the board has jointly decided to proceed with a hybrid meeting format, allowing members of the public and the board to attend and participate in the meeting in person or virtually. Tonight, all members of the board are here. Votes taken during this meeting will be via roll call vote for all members. In accordance with Emergency Order Number 12, for members of the public, this is to confirm that we are present. Providing public access to the meeting by telephone with additional access possibility by video or other electronic means through GoToMeeting, all members of the public and the board have the ability to communicate contemporarily during this meeting through the GoToMeeting platform. And the public has access to contemporarily listen and, if necessary, participate in this meeting through dialing the following phone number, 1-646-749-3122, followed by the audio access code 447-550-261, or by video following the directions on the Town of Wolfboro website posted on the homepage under Virtual Town Meeting Login Information. Providing public notice of the necessary information for accessing the meeting, we previously gave notice to the public of how to access the meeting in person or using the GoToMeeting. And instructions are provided on the Town website at wolfboronh.us on the Virtual Town Meeting Login Information page. Providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. If anybody has a problem accessing the meeting by a phone or computer, please immediately call 603-387-8259 or email the town manager at wolfboro nh.us. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled at that time. All members are present tonight at the Town Hall. And I'm going to do a roll call vote. Brian?
Here.
Luke?
Here.
Linda's here. Dave?
Yeah.
Brad?
Here.
Okay. Mr. Town Manager, I'm assuming we have no need for another non-public?
That is correct.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, the minutes of May 5. Does anybody have any corrections or additions? I have a number of corrections. On page two, up right at the top, we should add RSA 91-A:32D. On page four, just, you have three paragraphs up just above Chairman Murray opened the second public hearing. We need a sentence that says Chairman Murray closed the public hearing. We closed the one before before we opened the new one. And on page five, just prior to the listing of the temporary event permits, there should be a sentence that reads Chairman Murray requested that the board table the five public hearings from the nonprofits to sponsor WSR to play music at the community bandstand, the Back Bay Waterski Tournament, and the Lakes Region Veteran Count 5K Run until the next meeting. And then one more sentence, the board agreed to table these events. Okay.
You want to motion, Ms. Amendment?
I have one more. I have it on the end. I guess it's on page 12. We have to again put in the RSA for the non-public, which is RSA 91-A:3 Romanuul 2D. And yes, I'd love a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes of May 5 as amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Brad?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Linda's yes. Luke?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay. Done with that. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. It's the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, May 19, 2021 at 6:30 PM at the Great Hall, Town Hall, 84 South Main Street, Wolfboro, New Hampshire, and via global.gotomeeting.com/447550261, or by telephone. And they listed the different ways you can access by phone. And for accepting unanticipated funds for the amount awarded, that is less than $10,000 in accordance with RSA 31:95-B3A related to a donation from the Friends of Abenaki in the amount of $7,048.09 for the cost for installing the pump at the ice-making shed at Abenaki 390 Pine Hill Road. Do I have anybody here who'd like to speak to this public hearing? State your name.
Good evening. Bill Swaffield from the Friends of Abenaki. Linda, you had mentioned $7,048?
Yep.
That should be $7,500. The $7,048 is to actually electrically hook up the pump and the motor that was put in, but the cost of getting it into the pump house was $7,500 and rehabbing the pump and the motor.
So it's $7,000?
$500.
$500.
Yeah. We will have a $7,048 donation down the road here shortly for Rick Burns Electric to hook it up electrically.
Okay. So the board, we're having a change to the notice. We're getting, we're accepting more money, this time we're $7,500 for the installation of the pump. Is everybody comfortable with just taking that amount of money at this point? Dave?
Linda, it's actually the installation and the rehab of the pump and the motor. We purchased them used and then the town had them rebuilt and rehabbed. That's the cost of doing that and also getting it into the pump house.
Jim, at this point, do we have too much of a change on the notice of this?
I think we do, Linda, because the information we have is exclusive to the estimate from Mr. Burns.
Well, you could accept that tonight as a public.
Well, that's the one we have. We'll change it to, so it's the cost of the installation of the pump, is that correct?
That's the, the $7,048 is the electrical cost to hook it up.
Okay. So we'll say the electrical cost for the installation of the pump.
Yeah.
All right. That's the public hearing we're on to.
Okay.
All right.
We can come back later and do the other one.
Yes.
Okay.
Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this public hearing? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, do we have any questions, concerns? Can I have a motion?
I'll make the motion, the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to accept the anticipated funds for the amount of the award that is less than $10,000 in accordance with RSA 31:95-B3A relative to a cash donation from the Friends of Abenaki in the amount of $7,048.09 to be booked to Friends of Abenaki Revenue Account Number 12-3200-383 to be used for installing the pump at the snowmaking shed at Abenaki 390 Pine Hill Road.
It's for the electric to install the pump?
Electrical, yes.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Brian seconded it. Luke made the motion. All righty. I'll start down there. Brian?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Linda's yes. Dave?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that that second pump and motor is a backup for what we already have, but we're anticipating, and we're two-thirds of the way through our fundraising now for adding additional snowmaking on the three trails that don't have it at this point and lighting on those three trails. So once that fundraising is completed, and we're anticipating and hoping that sometime this summer or next fall, we'll be able to actually do the installation of the snowmaking. You'll get some information on that from Christine from Parks and Rec as we move forward. But we are fundraising and finishing up hopefully on the fundraising for that project as we speak. So we're looking forward to completing the snowmaking on all the trails at Abenaki and getting lighting on all the trails so that the kids and people can ski them all in the evening. And the snowmaking can be accomplished at a much lower labor rate for the town because they won't have to drag hoses through the woods from the one line that we have that goes up the rope tow right now. We'll have snowmaking on Twister and the other two trails on the other side of the rope tow. So the labor cost will be less.
Well, thank you for all you've done to make Abenaki grow and be a wonderful place for the kids and adults of this community and our visitors to enjoy. I've spent many a day over there with my grandkids and it's just a wonderful addition to an already excellent slope.
Captain, I would hope that more adults would come out and ski. The rope tow, the grip on the rope tow is really not that bad. It's a good workout and it's great skiing. The groomed Kathy who does the grooming and Andrew have corduroy snow out there first thing in the morning on the days, on the weekend days, it's amazing skiing, really. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. I'll open up the next public hearing. It's the Town of Wolfboro to hold a public hearing on Wednesday, May 19, 2021 at 6:30 PM for the acceptance of unanticipated funds in the amount more than $10,000 in accordance with RSA 31:95-B3A to amend the amount of the New Hampshire Department of Safety for Wolfboro Highway Safety Grant from $12,300 to $15,200 with a match requirement of $725. This is amendment to a previously accepted amount on April 7, 2021. I'll open up the public hearing. Does anybody want to speak to this?
Good evening, folks. How are you? I'm Chief Dean Rondell Wolford PD. So this is another in a series of amendments that have been made to our New Hampshire Highway Safety Grant program. And the amount of money keeps trickling in slowly as New Hampshire continues to work through the COVID-19 and gets hit with noninterest status. So this is part of our ongoing grant program for extra patrols during the summer months to put extra police officers on the streets. So the initial grant that I think came in was relatively minor, $2,000 or $3,000, and it's continued to grow to its final amount now. So you've heard this about three or four times now, and unfortunately, I've asked them to maybe get all the money together in one shot and give it to us, but it isn't quite that simple. So I stand ready to answer any questions that you may have, but that's what this is really all about.
Thank you, Chief. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this event or this hearing? Seeing and hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Board members, does anybody have any questions? Hearing none, would somebody like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to move the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to accept the unanticipated funds in an amount more than $10,000 in accordance with RSA 31:95-B3A to amend the amount of the New Hampshire Department of Safety for the Wolfboro Highway Safety Grant from $12,300 to $15,200 with match requirement of $725, previously approved by the board on April 7, 2021.
I'll second that.
Okay. I had Brad made the motion. It was seconded by Dave Senical. Brad?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Linda's yes. Luke?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay. We've accepted that money. Next, we have a bunch of temporary event permits. First one is the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to consider a temporary event permit for the American Legion Post 18 to sponsor WASR radio to play music at the community bandstand from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM on July 2, 2021. Is there anybody here who'd like to speak to that? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, what would you like to do with this? We're going to, this will be one, and we have four more, same kind of a setup with WASR. They aren't here, nor is the nonprofit. Are we comfortable at issuing this without anybody here? Anybody have an issue? Okay. Can I have a motion?
I'll move to grant a temporary event permit for the American Legion Post 18 to sponsor WASR radio, play music at the community bandstand from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM on July 2, 2021.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have Dave made the motion, Brad seconded. Brian?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Linda's yes. Dave?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Okay. That permit is issued. Now I'll open up the next public hearing, the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to consider a temporary event permit for the New Hampshire Boat Museum to sponsor WASR radio to play music at the community bandstand from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM on July 16, 2021. I'll open up the public hearing. Is anybody here who'd like to speak to it? Is there anybody in the public who'd like to speak to it? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, does anybody have a motion?
Make the motion to grant a temporary event permit for New Hampshire Boat Museum to sponsor WASR radio to play music at the community bandstand from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM on July 16, 2021, permit number 2021-28B.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Luke made the motion, Brian seconded. Brian?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Linda's yes. Dave?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Okay. We're on to the next one. I'd like to open up the public hearing. It's the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to consider a temporary event permit for the Great Waters Music to sponsor WASR music to play music at the community bandstand from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM on July 30, 2021. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this permit? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to approve a temporary event permit for Great Waters Music to sponsor WASR radio to play music at the community bandstand from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM on July 30, 2021, permit number 2021-28C.
Second.
And, okay, I had Brad make the motion, Dave seconded. Brad?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Linda, yes. Luke?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay. We'll move on to the next public hearing. I'll open up the next public hearing. It's the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to consider a temporary event permit for the Friends of the Libby Museum to sponsor WASR radio to play music at the community bandstand from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM on August 13, 2021. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this public hearing? Hearing and seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Board members?
I'll move to grant a temporary event permit for the Friends of the Libby Museum to sponsor WASR radio, play music at the community bandstand from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM on August 13, 2021.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Brian? Okay, Dave Senical made the motion, Brian seconded. Brad?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Linda's, yes? Luke?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay, I'll open up the next public hearing, the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to consider a temporary event permit for N68 Hours of Hunger to sponsor WASR radio to play music at the community bandstand from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM on August 20th, 2021. Do I have anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this event? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Board members?
I'll make the motion to grant a temporary event permit for N68 Hours of Hunger to sponsor WASR radio to play music at the community bandstand from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM on August 20th, 2021, and September 3rd, 2021, permit number 2021-28E.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I had a motion made by Luke, seconded by Dave Senical. Brian?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Linda's, yes? Dave?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Okay, we're on a roll. We've gotten out of WASR. All right, I'll open up the next public hearing, the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to consider a temporary event permit for the Back Bay Water Ski, Inc., also known as Abenaki Water Ski Club, to host the waters, to host water ski tournaments in Back Bay from 8:00 AM to sunset on the following days, June 26th, 2021, the 30th Annual New Hampshire Open, July 17th through the 18th, 2021, the 41st Annual Lake Regional Open, August 21st, 2021, the 30th Annual New Hampshire Water Ski Championship, and September 11th, 2021, the 20th Annual New England Slalom Championship. Do I have anybody to speak to this per?
Bill Swaffield again, this time for the Abenaki Water Ski Club. Yeah, we're putting on four events that we've been doing traditionally in the past since 1981. That's when the Lakes Region Open dates back to 1981, so it's our 41st year in Back Bay. We bring in about 40 skiers to each of these tournaments with their families, and they're very popular because we're right downtown with water ski site. I would remind you that, let you know that Wolfboro is the only town in New Hampshire that has a three-event water ski site in its municipality. That is, the three traditional events of water ski competition, slalom, jumping, and trick skiing. So that's one of the things that I like to say that makes Wolfboro unique in New Hampshire, is having these tournaments in Back Bay. So we appreciate the town letting us use the park site down behind the railroad station. We are now putting, reconstructing a steel ski jump that we purchased, or we actually got for free from Okem, Massachusetts, that they're no longer using the site down there. So we're reconstructing it behind the present ski jump that you see out there right now. And we're going to take the side curtains off, that's our jump, put it on the new jump, and then we'll get rid of the old jump. So that's construction, we'll not be going on hopefully too much longer. Hopefully, we'll get the new jump into the water on Memorial Day weekend. But we do have the four events, the 33rd New Hampshire Open on the 26th of June, the 41st Lakes Region Open, 17th and 18th of July, and the 30th New Hampshire Water Ski Championships, 21st of August, and then the New England Slalom Championships on the 20th Annual on September 11th this year. It's all amateur competition, but we have most of the best water skiers from New England and beyond actually come to these tournaments. So it's a fun thing for people to watch, and people love to come.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak to this permit? Hearing and seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Board members, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Swaffield? Any comments? Okay, then I need a motion.
Move to grant a temporary event permit for the Back Bay Water Skiers, Inc., DBA Abenaki Water Ski Club to host the water ski tournaments in Back Bay from 8:00 AM to sunset on the following dates, June 26th, 2021, 33rd Annual NH Open, July 17th, 18th, 2021, 41st Annual Lakes Region Open, August 21st, 2021, 30th Annual New Hampshire Water Ski Championships, and September 11th, 2021, the 20th Annual New England Slalom Championships, permit number 2021-29.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I'll take it from Luke. All right, so I had Brian make the motion, Luke seconded it. Brian?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Linda's, yes? Dave?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
You have your permit. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'll open up the final public hearing on a temporary event, the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to consider a temporary event permit for the Lakes Region Veterans Count Easter Seal of New Hampshire to host a 5K run or walk to benefit New Hampshire Veterans Count at 399 Center Street on August 7th, 2021, from 6:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Do I have somebody who'd like to speak to this event?
Hi, how are you? I'm Dean Rondo, and I'm here to speak to this event. So I sit on the Board of Directors of Veterans Count, Division of Easter Seals, and this will be the 30th Annual Veterans Count 5K Run. This is a hybrid run. It is a virtual run, so some members will be there. Most of the participants will probably be doing it either elsewhere or they'll be doing it sometimes over the course of the year on a 5K course of their choosing. Again, this is the third year that we've run this race. We took a year off last year, just did it virtually. And this is used to raise money for veterans programs, to support veterans who served in all of the branches of service and the various components, include the National Guard and Reserves and so forth and so on. And it fits in where the VA can't, either statutorily or funding. And so it's a, again, it's a vision of the Easter Seals. And we actually raise quite a bit of money every year, brings people into the town. So what are your questions?
Okay, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this event? Hearing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. Board members, does there anybody have any comments for the chief? Hearing none, can I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to move to grant a temporary event permit for the Lakes Region Veterans Count, Easter Seals of New Hampshire, to host a 5K run or walk to benefit New Hampshire Veterans Count at 399 Center Street on August 7th, 2021, from 6:00 AM to 12:00 PM, permit number 2021-33.
I'll second that.
Okay, I had a motion by Brad, a second by Dave. Brad?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Linda's, yes? Luke?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay, we made it through. They're all done. Next item on the agenda, public input limited to three minutes per person, not to exceed 15 minutes. Please state your name for the record.
I'm Sarah Silk, and I'm here for Lakes Region Household Hazardous Product Facility this evening. And I have dropped a copy for each of you, a hard copy of a grant agreement contract from Department of Environmental Services for $2,569 as the total amount of grant money that LRHHPF can get for fiscal year 2021. And that includes, it's based on the population of both member communities, which is Alton and Wolfboro. And what we need this evening is a motion from the Board of Selectmen to have the town manager sign the application, and then I will be hand-delivering it to DES, as they have advised me this past week, they would like it by the 25th of the month.
Does anybody on the board have any questions or comments for Sarah? Hearing none, I'll make a motion. I move to accept the Household Hazardous Waste Collection Fund, and to enter into the grant contract with New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, and further to authorize the town manager to execute any documents which may be necessary for this grant. Do I have a second?
Second.
I got, Linda made the motion, Dave Senical seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Brad?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Linda's, yes? Luke?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the Board of Selectmen for their support for this program. And we had our first of six household hazardous waste collections last Saturday, May 15. They are the third Saturday of the month, May through October here. And then we do one also in Alton, the second Saturday of July, and the second Saturday of September. We collected 115 households' worth of hazardous waste. And we have been fully opened the entire time during COVID, and we have had a large influx of people from away because Lakes Region Planning Commission has had a couple of towns that have stepped back because of financial concerns. And last year, we took in over $6,000 in funds from people that did not have membership, which means they didn't live in Alton and Wolfboro. We also service small quantity generators, which are small businesses that come in with prior notice. And we have, we had three small quantity generators come in this month, and we have some lined up for next month. So I want to thank you for everything you've always done to make this program possible. And a little shout out to the chief, because we'll be having our medicine collection the third Saturday of June, and without their support, that wouldn't happen. Thank you.
All righty. I don't see anybody else in the public, so we'll move on to bulk vote. Is there anybody who would like to take anything out of the bulk vote?
Madam Chair?
Yes?
There's two items in here that I was going through. It'd be under the property tax abatements, number seven and number 10. On the forms, the front page of each of the forms, these are both denials. And where it says revised assessment, it says zero on both of those. And being these denials, it should be the same cost of valuation for the original assessment should be written there, and the zero should be down at the difference. Now, I don't know if that makes a difference on this front form, if we approve it, or is this, would this need to be redone and brought before?
I don't know that. I mean, it's denied, and on the list, it says denied. The question is, is the, you're asking, is the form filled out correctly?
Right, and clearly, it's, it's not. When I looked at the other ones there, there were changes on them. The revised assessment goes to what the town assessor suggested that they are agreed to what the amount would be.
So do we want to table those two and have them sent back?
That's kind of a question I'm asking, I mean.
Jim?
Why don't we just table them?
Why don't we just, they're, they're not going to have any
See these two here, this is Impact.
Impact, because they're not calculating any.
Yeah, if you want to table, I can get more information from the assessor.
Brad, do you want to make that motion?
I will make that motion to pull, let's see, under our property tax abatements, number seven and number 10, which is 262 Pine Hill Road and 34 Harbor Way, number 28, from the bulk vote tonight.
I have Brad is making the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dave seconded. Brian?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Linda's, yes? Dave?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
So those have been removed. Is there anybody who has any issue with any of the other ones? I did send out the correct information on 203 Forest Road late this afternoon. I don't know if people are comfortable with that, or they'd like that one to be pulled also until we, they had a chance to read the backup, or are we all set with that? Everybody seems to be okay with that. I also sent you out the map on the current use application on 114 Caliper. It was just to show you that the 7.7 acres was connected to an already larger lot, so we didn't have an issue with at least 100, I mean, 10 acres. So if I don't hear anything else, I'll go through and read the bulk vote. The May 7th manifest is $1,701,269.93. The next one is $1,803,980.80. Then we have a current use application, and we have a group of abatements. We have a couple intent to cut. We have property tax credit. And that is all we have. Does, can I have a motion to accept the bulk vote with those taken out?
Some moved.
Second?
Second.
I'll take Brian. Okay, Luke made the motion, Brian seconded. Brian?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Linda's, yes? Dave?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Next item is an appointment, Forest Fire Warden. Town manager, you want to take this one?
Yeah, so at this point, we need to appoint somebody to be the Forest Fire Warden. It makes logical sense that the fire chief is that, the person to fill that role, where he's responsible for all the equipment associated with that business. So I'm just asking that you appoint Acting Chief Tom Zotti as our Forest Fire Warden.
Any members have any questions? Hearing none, does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll move to appoint Tom Zotti as Fire, Forest Fire Warden.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I had Dave Senical make the motion, Luke second it. Brad?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Linda's, yes? Luke?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
What we all like to see, the next item on the agenda is the first half property tax warrant. Jim, do you want to take this one, too?
So our tax collector, Brenda LaPointe, is very excited to be getting the taxes out early this year compared to the past few years. So the first tax bills at this point will be mailed out on the 21st of May, and they would be due on July the 1st. The total assessment for this period would be $15,412,336.
Does anybody have any questions, concerns? If not, can I have a motion?
I'll move to authorize the members of the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen to approve and sign the 2021 Town of Wolfboro Property Tax Warrant, the amount of $15,413,36. For the first half property tax is to be issued May 21st, 2021.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I had, the motion was made by Dave Senical, second by Brian. Brian?
Yes.
Luke?
Yes.
Linda's, yes?
Dave? Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Okay. Moving on to the next is Great Waters Street Piano. I received an email requesting that the board approve the pianos going out shortly after Memorial Day, and they'll be taken back in after Labor Day. They have a series of businesses who are willing to cover them and take care of the pianos, and some wiping down of the keys. Great Waters will assume that responsibility. So there's going to be Winnie Paw Station's going to help us out, Butternut, Wolf Trap, Paul Zimmerman, and the fifth one is going to be at Durgan Stables or in the La Boca parking lot, but they're still trying to get coverage for that. We should be excited to have those pianos back out on the sidewalks. It's fun to hear people playing. So I think this can be a consensus, unless somebody feels strongly we need to vote. Are we all in agreement that these pianos should Are we all in agreement that these pianos should go back out into those locations? Anybody have an issue with that?
I, I have a question.
Yep.
Can we just put a hand sanitizer by the, should we put a hand sanitizer by the pianos just as a safety measure or something? They say they're going to wipe them down once a week. I mean, it might be overkill, but it might be something that-
Does the board feel we want to wipe them more often? I mean, I think we're kind of getting to the point where they're saying you're not getting much contact by, you know, and I think most people who have concerns usually bring hand sanitizers. But if people feel that they want, they ask Great Waters to do it more often, we can send them that message. How's the rest of the board feel?
I don't think we need to keep wiping them down. I'm sure these people that have them can have somebody that would do that periodically.
We'll leave it to the people, then.
Yeah, I will just, I will, when I send an email back to Barbara, I will just tell her that we were wondering whether it's possible to wipe them down more often.
Yep.
Will that do it for, okay. Thank you. Next item is the Highway and Solid Waste reimbursement for Capital Reserve Fund.
I believe Dave is here to speak on these topics. Dave?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I sent him a memo. Does everyone have a copy of the memo?
Yes, it was in our packet.
So this is in accordance with the capital plan and the Warren article we presented. This year, we're purchasing two pieces of equipment. And it's listed there, HD1 replacement, but they, we had difficulty finding. We went out to bid, and we didn't get any bids, but we, after the bids, we kept searching. We finally found a 2020 Chevy, what we were looking for. We got a good price on it. So that one is a good one, and the second one is the compactor with the solid waste facility. And again, we did bid that out, trying to get the best price we could right there. So that's in line with our estimates, and we're just asking your approval for purchase in accordance with our procedures.
Board members, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Ford about any of these purchases? Hearing and seeing none, will somebody give me a motion to accept this?
Yeah, I'll make a motion for the Board of Selectmen to authorize expenditure of $74,880 to replace HD1 vehicle in the amount of $44,660, and to replace the SW8 waste compactor in the amount of $30,220, and his agents to expend to request reimbursement from the DPW vehicle and equipment replacement Capital Reserve Fund.
Second.
Okay, I had a motion by Brad, a second by Luke. Okay, I'll start with you, Brad.
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Linda, yes. Luke?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay. We okayed it. We've got the meeting ended online.
Uh-oh.
An organizer-
Can anybody out there online hear us?
No. No, I think she asked if we wanted to. No, we're just done, but she said by consensus.
Do we have to have a vote on the pianos?
Just say that we're, we're just allowing it to go out on the street. I just feel if I can sense this, everybody agrees that it can go out.
Let me try connecting this.
Okay.
You broke the string.
I get the riddles.
I did it to the next one. These are just-
I love where you turn.
Break another one?
I did. I got to say, they've got pretty-
That means we can go down and get ice cream. What's going on up there, anything? Let's blame it on, we'll blame it on Dean.
Mine is well, right, Dean?
Very expensive sneakers, and God hate them, and mine's been pretty long.
So I haven't asked Amy. She hasn't been around.
What's wrong with her? Anybody know?
I think she's got- She has the migraines sometimes. And she's in that age category.
Yep, gotcha.
What was I going to say? Oh, IT person. We hire somebody full-time?
Yeah, Beverly Wood.
And they're back, yep.
We're back. We're back with us, but Suzanne's still here.
Is it connected now, board?
Yeah, it's coming.
I just got, I just got reconnected. I was disconnected after David spoke.
Suzanne, can you hear us?
Yes, I can now hear you. I could not hear anything after David spoke.
After David spoke, we made a motion, made by Brad, seconded by Luke, to okay, okay those transfers out of the Capital Reserve Fund. And then before we went on to the next thing, I noticed that the computer was not connected.
But the IT guy got it fixed.
Okay. After approving the highway and solid waste requests from the Capital Reserve account, we're moving to the next item, which is the building permit process on a Class 6 or private road. And I am going to see if the board is willing to, to table that.
Yep.
I have still issues, and I've had a couple conversations with Tavis, and he would like us to table it. So can I have a motion to table the building permit process on Class 6 road and private roads?
Some moved.
Okay, Dave Senical moved, Luke seconded. Brad?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Linda's yes. Luke?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the April actual versus budget report, and that's from the Finance Director.
Good evening. Yes, we are four twelfths of the way through the year, 33% spent. The general fund is about 36%, slightly above a four-month average, but no concerns or areas that need to be watched at this point. The water fund is about 39%, electric 38%, sewer fund is at 76% expended, but most of that is encumbered due to the waste water treatment plant, and pop whaling about 42% because their season is winding down. The revenues are only at 10%, but that will spike up in May and June when all the tax bills start coming in. And then the water fund revenue is at 23%, electric at 33%, sewer at 29%, and pop whaling at 56%. At this point, I do not have any concerns. We do, will be in the next month or two, sending the funds over to the trustees of the trust fund for all the Warren articles that were approved. We did just make an expenditure for the fire truck, so that was one of the big manifests that we just voted on on your bulk vote. Other than that, pretty much status quo so far. I'll entertain any questions if you have them.
Any board members have any questions? I did have a ton of questions today. I called Casey and got them all answered. They were just lines that I just couldn't understand why they were where they were. So she did an excellent job of answering my questions. Does anybody have any questions for Casey? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Yep. Next item is discussion Fourth of July parade parking ban and enforcement plan. Jim, do you want to take this, or you want me to do it? Whatever.
So I think we all know that we are tentatively looking at holding a Fourth of July parade. Parade will begin at 1:00 PM, based on the fact that it's a Sunday. The Police Department, in conjunction with the Fire Department, are working with the American Legion to lay out parking plans. One of the items that happened a couple of years ago, you may recall, is we removed parking from the downtown area during the parade. We did that for safety concerns, and it's actually going to help us as we go into this year's parade to promote social distancing in the downtown area. With that said, the stakeholders are continuing to work on their plans. I don't know if Chief Rondo or anybody else has got any further that they'd like to speak to.
Hi, so I'm Chief Rondo. We're hooky. About three or four weeks ago, we had a meeting with the American Legion at Town Hall, and there were a number of stakeholders there. And so there was a lot of, there was a lot of good discussion that was had about how to do this parade, how to do it safely. I think everybody's on board with it. I'm feeling a lot more comfortable about moving ahead with the parade and how to do that and mitigate risk. Of course, one of the things that we want to do, obviously, is fall back on what we did about two years ago, right before the whole COVID-19 thing hit, which was to essentially move the vehicles from the downtown. That does, that does a number of things for us, and this would be, of course, along the entire parade. Well, one, it, as the town manager said, it gives people an opportunity to spread out. That will facilitate social distancing, be able to, to maintain some good gaps. The other thing that it does is it lets people watch the parade safely. And in fact, I just got a phone call today from a gentleman in town who's gravely concerned about the safety during the parade, and he was mentioning that he was going to reach out and talk to the town manager and express some concerns to him. So Jim, I, the fellow, his name escapes me right now, but I think he's a former fire chief somewhere. And he was talking, telling a tale about where he was a fire chief, and a kid got, a young child got squished by a parade float. Doesn't want to see the same thing happen in Wolfboro. So I think these are all really good things, and these are good concerns. And this is one of the reasons why we, we decided two years ago that we do want to remove the vehicles from the downtown area and give everybody an opportunity to spread out. And you can see the parade lockup, right? I mean, when we did it two years ago, people said, wow, what a difference. It's really good. We can spread out. We don't have to try and get in between automobiles and feel congested. So with that being said, of course, Christine and American Legion are working on their parking plans and how to integrate Molly, the trolley, into, into this and so forth and so on. I think one of the things we're looking at doing is having a, a walking impaired section right in front of Town Hall where the trolley can come in and drop people off, and then pick them up after the parade and take them back to their automobiles, and that will facilitate that movement. And of course, for parking, we're looking at all the normal places that we parked in the past. This would be Oddfellow's parking lot, this would be the High School complex, Glendon Street Lot, so forth and so on. As you know, we are restricted with parking here in town. There isn't a whole lot of parking. That's a whole nother discussion that we probably have to have at some point in time. But I think that's probably the best we're going to do. So what are your questions and concerns at this, at this time?
I think the thing about this year's, the last time we closed parking, it was from Mill to Glendon Street. This year, we're going to do it the full length of the parade route. And the last time we closed it, we held a public hearing. This time, we also have a fine attached, so I believe that the board should hold a public hearing on this parking plan. And Jim thought we could do it at our June 2nd meeting. How does the board feel about that? I think it gives the public a chance to give us public input. Everybody agreeable with that? So we'll put that on as a, as a public hearing, and I want to thank Dean for kind of laying this out. I was at that meeting, and I said, you willing to lay out our notices? And he said, yes, he was. So thank you very much, Dean, for doing that.
Thank you very much.
Linda, Linda, I have one thing.
Yep, go ahead.
On one page, it says the July 4th parade route, no parking, 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Signage produced by the Public Works Department. But then on this one, it says 7:30 to 1:00 PM.
This is last year's, an example of what the signs are going to look like.
From two years ago. That's, that's all it is.
Yeah.
Okay, so normally, we would do it from 7:30 in the morning on. But this year, because it's a Sunday, we're having the parade a little bit later in the afternoon. That's to facilitate the churchgoers coming, coming and going to church, either taking advantage of the parade or getting out of the center of town with the parade. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
I did send to the board an email that I received from Allison Wilson, who was dismayed to find out that we were going to use criteria to decide whether the parade went forward or not. And I just want to make sure the members of the board read that and know that there are concerns. They just want us to say it's on. Okay. Other business. Does anybody have any other business? Brian?
Yes, I, I wanted to talk to the board a little bit about our new permits for the Building Department. I've done a lot of research and talked to towns that do it in several different ways. And didn't find anything that really fit Wolfboro well. So doing some mathematical calculations, I created an algorithm that I thought might be interesting for everyone to look at. So in the paper that I handed out to you, what it shows is it shows the project square footage across the top, and these numbers are numbers that our town manager kind of was using to get a gauge for himself, so I continued to use those. And then I used our current method that we use for calculating the building permit fees. This is all for just residential homes. This is the way I used for base. And it does the total square foot times $75 times .004. And so you can see the, the amount that the permit fee would be for each house, 1,200 square feet, 1,800 square feet, up to 19,200 square feet. Then I used the proposed code formula that Tavis and Steve have brought to us. And there shows $250 plus 35 cents a square foot times the square feet, or divided by, times the square feet, for under 4,000 square foot homes, and 350 plus 50 cents a square foot for above 4,000 square foot homes. So then you can see how their numbers vary from our current numbers, where a small house, a 1,200 square foot house, would almost double their permit cost. So I created an algorithm using a little bit of trigonometry, and created a curve that uses the square foot of the building and then creates a per-square-foot cost factor, and then figures it on 1,000 square feet. And it gives you, for a 1,200 square foot home, the cost factor being 6.5 in this, in this equation right here. But that cost factor can be either raised or lowered to adjust for your permit costs, depending on where you want to set it for the current environment of construction and other things. So it shows that if you set it at a cost factor of 6.5, you'll end up with a 1,200 square foot house being a little bit less- square foot house being a little bit less than what we charge now for a permit. But by the time you hit around 2,000 square feet, it starts to escalate so that when you get up to the larger homes, like a 9,600 square foot house, someone is paying a larger permit fee, which makes sense because as we increase the size of the homes, the complexity increases, the amount of bathrooms involved increases, the time to review the project increases, there's a lot more man hours and a lot more expense into it. We can take and we can change that figure and we can actually, if we need to also, if we find things get too expensive for a 20,000 square foot home, we could cap off our, our expense for a, for a permit. Then if we go to the second page, what I did was using the algorithm and using the 6.5 cost ratio that I used, and I picked that number as what I thought was a good base because it makes it so that any house that's 2,000 square foot and under doesn't get affected by our permit increases. It just increases the cost for permits above that for the larger homes. The formula takes the square footage of the project, multiplies it by a cost per square foot ratio, and then divides by the 1,000 square feet. You can see the curve. The curve is created using the method with a 6.5 cost ratio. And it shows how it starts flat and it curves up. When you get to 10,000 square foot homes, it ends up being substantially more. Then if you go to page three, what I did was I went to, to Terry at the, at the building department, Terry Tavares, and said, what were the last 18 houses that were built in town? She gave me the last 18 as of 5/14, May 14th, because she had them on record. And I, I used the square footage list that she gave me. And then I used the first method, which is number one, which is our current method, and listed all the costs associated with every house that was built in, in the town the last 18 houses. The second method, number two, is the proposed 46% increase by Steve, by our code enforcement officer, our, our building inspector. The, the last four columns are using the, the cost factor equation, the ascending cost equation. And 3A, what I did was I set the cost factor at a very low number, 3.25, so that the smallest house would end up paying the same amount for a, for a permit fee. However, because there, it is a curve, by the time you get to the larger houses, it became very expensive. An 8,000 square foot house is a $19,000 permit. That's still way under what would be charged in some expensive towns like Portsmouth. That, that cost would be four times that. But then I took the, the cost factor and I set it at seven, six and a half and six, just so, for an example, we could see how manipulating the cost factor can change where the different permit costs fall. So again, I, I found that the 6.5 worked best for my calculations because it equalizes it at around 2,000 square feet. It also, if, if we used that factor and that equation would, for the last year, the last 18 houses built, would give us actually more than their proposed increase by a couple of $1,000 without hurting the, or increasing the expenses of permit fees on the smaller homes. It's just a different way to look at the equation, a different way to, to permit, you know, get a permit fee for a house. Does anybody have any questions?
I got one, Linda. Yeah, Brian, thanks for doing all this work and stuff here. Do any of the towns use a formula similar to this at all or is this something?
What a lot of towns do is, most towns use a straight line. But then what they do with the larger houses is they charge multiple inspections for additional bathrooms, multiple inspections for added things to the, to the building structure. And it becomes that you're, that you have a lot of, doing one large house ends up having a lot of inspections that all have to be itemized, all have to be added. And they do that so that they can cover their man hours. In Portsmouth, they decided to set a flat rate, $7 per $1,000 cost of construction. And I asked him, I said, well, how do you know? He goes, I, I was a builder for 20 years. I can tell when somebody is, is giving me a cost that isn't correct. But if you were to build a, a 2,000 square foot house in Portsmouth, and right now the, the current rate is about $300 a square foot, you'd be looking at a $600,000 house. And then that ends up giving you a $4,200 permit for a 2,000 square foot house. So I was like, that formula doesn't work for Wolfboro. Why it works for Portsmouth is he said, we never have houses built for under $1 million anymore. So they don't mind charging a higher fee for their, for their, their inspections. They actually charge for commercials sometimes up over $1 million for a building permit. So we don't want to go that route. Charging a dollar per 1,000 square foot is difficult. Using our old formula, I mean, we could modify the old formula, but I was trying to figure out where the old formula came from. And I guess the 75, the best of my recollection would be that the 75 would be, maybe they were looking at, that's what the square foot cost was to build when this formula was put in place 15 years ago. But I don't know what the .004 is for. I'm trying to give a formula that kind of explains, it, it, it's self-explanatory that the code enforcement officer, when he understands it, can, can tell people why their permit costs as much as it does and that is malleable so that we can change it easy and adjust for different times. If we end up having a housing recession and then there's a lot of smaller homes being built and workforce housing being built in Wolfboro, it's very easy to adjust the formula to, to cater to that market.
Dave, do you have any comments on it?
Well, the only thing I have to say is that I don't think there's a town around the state that with their permit fees pay for their departments. I don't think any town that I'm aware of or that I've worked in even, that the permit fees cover everything in a department. So.
No, and that's not the, that's the, that's not the, the purpose of this. The purpose of this is to, and that's what I tried to do, looking on, at page three. I tried to, to make it so that their projected new formula that they were going to use and their revenues were, were very close to what we wanted to, to do. So they're, they're looking at bringing in over the last 18 houses, $20,000. Well, I'm trying to get it somewhere around $24,000. And the extra $4,000 would not be on the smaller houses being built. That would be associated with the larger houses being built. So that, because if you look at the percentage of the construction cost of a large house and compared to what their permit cost is right now, it, it is, it's kind of out of whack. It's, it's a little bit difficult for me to swallow that someone building a little house pays a much higher percentage of their construction budget on their permit than somebody building a larger house. It doesn't make sense. You get taxed on your larger house the same way that someone gets taxed on a smaller house. If you have a newer car, you pay the, a registration fee more than on an inexpensive car. There's no reason why that our permit fees shouldn't work about the same way.
Luke?
I think the information is, I think there's a lot of different ways to look at it and I thank Brian for bringing this to our attention. You know, I, I, I think the fact that we're not in a crunch to do anything gives us the time to look at all these different things and integrate them. I mean, there's, there's obviously a need to bring things more in line. And I, I think the work Brian's done is, you know, it's, it's, it's good and it's good to look at it multiple different ways. And so I embrace that too.
I, I, I like the fact that we're looking at the, the smaller houses paying less, the less expensive. That, that appeals to me as, as a good method and we have some good reason to do that. We have a public hearing coming up next meeting, which is going to address the three options that we had looked at before. This option is not on it. When we get to that public hearing, we should talk about those three options. We can decide to not move forward and then at another point, we, if we want to look at this, we can. Or we can pass one of those and then decide to take a look at this method. So we, Brian had brought it to my attention. I asked him to bring it to you tonight because it gives you plenty of time to take a look at these figures and think about them. And we don't have the cost. I don't think it would be nice for the staff to do what it would cost the houses if we raised it 25%, 50% and 75%. We didn't have it on the 75%. So and I'll ask Jim, what do you think?
So Brian, Tavis, Steve and I met. We discussed this. We felt that it was an interesting way to look at a different formula. We felt that we had already noticed the public hearing about the 25, 50 or 75%. We felt we needed to stick with that. And whatever happens at that public hearing, happens at that public hearing. But we also agreed that moving forward, we would do a study of the formula Brian is proposing. And anything that comes in, we would plug those numbers into Brian's formula so that we could do that over the next six or eight months to see what we might run into for hiccups or how it may work for us or, or if there's some fine tuning that needs to happen. And we thought that we would come back in the beginning of the year with Brian's formula and say, is this a better solution to spreading out the costs for the larger homes versus the smaller homes? The other conversation that we did have was, on both ends of it, was to a, a minimum inspection fee and a maximum inspection fee. But I, I thought it was a, a good conversation. It was an interesting way to look at it and we're going to continue to study it. But the public hearing is still noticed for June 2nd with the 25, 50 or 75%. And you will have that data for that meeting.
Okay. Any other comments anybody wants to make? I want to thank Brian for thinking outside the box and coming up with this. It's good to have new ideas and thoughts on, on things. So thank you very much. Anybody else have any other new, other business? Hearing none. I'll go on to committee reports and I'll start over here with Brad.
Yeah, I'm a little busy here. We had a planning board meeting last night. No public hearings. There was, ended up a lot of discussions over our subcommittees that we've had working on with the lighting, with the stormwater management, with short-term rentals. Those kind of dominated our meeting last night. Wolfboro Community TV meeting this morning. Good, we have good updates and stuff. And I believe I reported to you guys last meeting that we do have the, they're going to straighten out with IRS fires, 501(c)(3). So that's all, all good there and stuff. Friends of Liberty Museum, we met last Thursday. Went over, you know, stuff going on with the museum, getting ready to open up for the summer and stuff, programs and talked a little bit about the MOU and stuff. And they went into an executive session to discuss that further. Haven't heard anything more on that. And then was it Monday, we had a short-term rental subcommittee meeting here, right here at the Great Hall. And that was really pretty much dominated by the public inputs session. So we did talk a little bit at the, actually, planning board meeting last night. It'd be nice to kind of limit that to a timeframe at the next meeting so that we can actually have a time as a committee to discuss our different ideas and how to approach this. That's kind of the plan moving forward right now.
Thank you.
That's it for me.
Dave?
I had no meeting.
Okay. Luke?
So we had the chamber, the chamber meeting for this month and there was a, a lot of discussion about a couple of different things. But the chamber, and I'll just, Linda, correct me if I'm wrong, the chamber wanted to, you know, talking about the beaches and the upcoming forum, public hearing we're going to hold this summer on the beaches, the chamber reiterated its support that all beaches should be open to the public in their, in a, in a vote. And there was, so that was, that was the, one of the main things. There were some other things that we talked about at the meeting and, you know, there was a lot of this, they discussed the parade and, you know, a lot of discussion about that, a lot of discussion about the chambers starting to read, you know, re-meet in person and where they could do that in the near future. And the next meeting is going to be a in-person meeting, potentially outside at the pavilion. I think we're going to try to do that at Foss Field. So a lot of good things happening there, a lot of good discussion. And that's my report.
So we had, I, we had a scheduled May 12th cable franchise committee meeting that was rescheduled for the 24th. On May 4th, we had an energy subcommittee meeting on EV chargers, looking at one or two port level two chargers and considering the DC fast chargers in the future. Looked at the possibilities of the Glendon Street Lot or the Train Museum location for the potential locations for a charger or two. We created a spreadsheet with different options from five to six different companies of either purchasing, leasing, or maybe being a host town where they would give us, donate us the, the charger and they would split revenues with us on the per kilowatt charge. Then we followed that up with a meeting with Barry and Linda, Nancy Hirschberg and myself to look at the two different locations and figure out what kind of power was at each station. And talked to Jim a little bit about getting the installation accomplished at some time. Then we had on May 13th, a, one of the companies, Blink EV, met with Dick Bird and myself and viewed both of the lots. Blink is, is considering and we're waiting for a result about having us be a host town where we get the equipment at no charge. They preferred the Train Museum site and we're still waiting for a, a yes from them. It's supposed to be coming this week. Then on May 18th, I attended an EDC meeting, Economic Development Committee meeting. And there was a discussion, a short discussion of a business survey that they've received 30% back from businesses in town. And it said that 40 to 60% of, of the, of the businesses said that they're, oh no, 30% of the business said that 40 to 60% of their labor force is seasonal in town, which I kind of expected. And there was talk about that they need to follow the master plan and focus on what needs to be done to help the business environment in Wolfboro and focus on short-term and long-term goals. I made a suggestion when they were talking that we should take the term tourists and we should look at the term tourists a little bit differently than it seems like we do. Meaning that sometimes they consider seasonal residents as tourists and they consider people who vacation for two weeks up here in a, a home that they rent or something as tourists. And they consider day trippers tourists. And those three different subgroups really are different in the town of Wolfboro. The seasonal residents, they come here to live for six months, whereas the people who stay here for two weeks shop and do other things at grocery stores where day trippers have different activities and things that they do. And I, and I thought it might be a little bit important to look at those different subgroups when we look at economic development of the town. subgroups when we look at economic development of the town. And that's all we had. Oh, and Dave Mayer was appointed the chair.
Okay. Reason I went last is I am the alternate to the EDC, and I wanted to allow Brian to give the report, and I'm the alternate to the chamber and gave his report. So I will hold back, you know, when we're, when I have those kind of meetings. I did go to the EOC meeting. They are saying that COVID is going down. We're now have anywhere from two to three persons per week who may test positive. That's down quite a bit. Huggins is kind of shifting over to being more of their normal operations. They'll still do testing, and they have been giving COVID shots to, I think, the 12- to 16-year-olds or 15-year-olds. But they still have, now they're starting to have sometimes when they can't use all the vaccine because the demand is not there. So it was a good meeting. It was, we're meeting again in June just to keep an eye on everything. I did take a tour of Back Bay today. We're looking for milfoil. And we thought, "Oh, great, we don't have any." Until we went out by where the ski group goes, and there was a big patch. So we're going to ask the Bob Shiloh, who usually puts in the markers for the ski team, to look and see what he sees down there. And Amy Spagula from New Hampshire DES comes in each year and does a survey, and she'll be coming in the next two weeks. And we do have money to do some, what we call dash units, some suctioning and hand-pulling. And if we do have patches, and it's going to be patches because there was a lot of the area that we didn't see any, we'll bring them in and try to address those areas. So we're starting to get going in, we, for a while we thought, "Well, we're done. There's nothing here." And then we questioned whether any were growing until we saw this nice big green patch. So we'll keep our fingers crossed. That's all I have. Town manager?
Thank you. Had a good meeting, myself and the finance director with the trustee, the trust funds. They are very happy with the processes which Casey's put in place. It seems like it's working much better, and we're getting that organized. Been spending a lot of time reading and attending webinars on the American Rescue Act. Sounds like the first round of funding that would potentially come to the town of Wolfboro would be most likely in the lines for water, sewer, and stormwater projects, but more to come on that. We signed the contract this week for the RIB construction to begin. So that project is getting ready to take place. You may also notice out there a lot of road construction going on, doing the work on Stonem Road, and they've initiated the work on Park and High Streets. So those are moving along. And I anticipate Mr. Ford will be here at the next meeting to give a capital project update. The last question that I have for the board is, now that we're meeting back in person again, and Mr. Sims has gotten a lot of work done with the railroad freight house, would you like to hear a status report directly from him as to where he is on that facility?
Yes.
I will get him in, hopefully for the June 2nd meeting to give you a status report. The last thing, to let more items on regarding the building, we're still waiting for product to come in for the roof repairs, the tiles. They were here, I believe it was yesterday, looking at the building again. And just lastly, when people come to the building, we are still just strongly encouraging mask usage. That's the stance we're taking. With that, I have nothing further.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do I have any questions from the press? Alyssa?
No, I have no questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is public input. Do I have anybody who would like to give us public input? Seeing and hearing none. Board members, can somebody give me a motion to adjourn?
I'll move the re-.
Dave Senical moves. Who do I have at second?
Second.
Brad seconds. Okay, Brad?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Lyndy? Yes. Luke?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.